Let's start the meeting.
Ding.
Okay, so, welcome everyone. Where's Doug?
I know.
I don't have anyone anymore.
His office is open, so I'm sure he's on his way.
Well, we can't wait. Okay, before we get going, I just wanted to give a little 4th of July update. I guess it's fault on their old business. Anyway, some people still aren't aware, the banner's up, but some are still not aware that we're having fireworks. So, I just wanted to announce that we definitely are having fireworks. They will be at nine o'clock and they're definitely going to be fired off on the pontoon boat, or barge, whatever they like to call it. So, that's a definite. We have music all day, there's four bands scheduled, food and drink vendors, we have only one food truck. We tried to get more, but we are starting late, so next year is one of the things we'll be working on. So far, we've only had a few commitments. We'll have a 50/50 raffle. Marie's insisting on this, so we're gonna do that. We're gonna have the bike decorating contest will start.
God is doing that to you because you told a lie.
He's busy with more than four events, I hope. The bike decorating contest started at four. We're gonna gather at the, just at the other side of the tracks by the subway on the west side, just so that the kids can drive down the short stretch to the bandstand. We'll judge them there. Sounds like a harsh word, judging them. I'm sure that's not politically correct. Anyway, we'll have prizes for the top three and coupons courtesy of Go-Go Pops for all participants, so they'll get a coupon they can either cash in right away or any time they like. Thank you, Lynn, for that. We have had a dozen residents have called and volunteered to help us over the last week, so many thanks to them. Some of our advertising work, so thank you. And thanks to Bruce and Angela and Marie for keeping this whole thing together. We've been meeting, you know, we've met a few times and trying to put it all together as much, as best we can. I think we've done a fairly good job, so thank you to all of you. And also for Trustee Miller doing the thankless job of fundraising. And thanks to, you know, many of the merchants have generously donated, so we will have a poster with all the folks that have donated, displayed at the riverfront that day.
In the PCN R and the crown.
What's that?
In the PCN R.
Yeah, and we'll follow up with the PCN R.
We passed a resolution for $500 to down.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thank you. So that's, I just give a wrap up there. We'll try to get something on Facebook, a little more, maybe, you know, a little more explanation on where the bike contest is gonna be and how, where people should meet. We'll have signs or directions once you get down there, but so everyone knows. And then maybe we can ask people to pass it on that there are fireworks, that we are having it, what's going on. That's it for that. We will talk a little bit after, at the end of the meeting about some logistics down to the dock and how things are being set up. And get some input from everyone and see what you think. Next is the Nelsonville Fire Protection Agreement. It seems like we've run into a snag once again. We have received a letter from the mayor and board of trustees of Nelsonville, which is to me puzzling at best. We've provided the essential fire protection since Nelsonville Fire Company ceased to operate, but for some reason they now believe, I guess that we're asking too much, I'm not really sure. They don't believe they should be paying the workers' comp or LoSAP, and according to the letter, I guess they're gonna try to hold a referendum to see if residents of Nelsonville want to agree to pay a portion of this cost. Again, my part's more puzzlement. We have sent this to our attorney for some guidance, but I haven't received anything back yet from John. I will read the letter. Enclosed the Fire Protection Agreement between Coal Spring and Nelsonville.
You should turn that to the board if they're wrong.
Yes, I will. This is also accompanied by a draft of an agreement which they've created for us, which is very nice of them, also peculiar, but I guess that's the way it works in some world, I don't know which. But we sent them basically, sent them an agreement, which we, the same as always, and for whatever reason, like I said, they're walking and not willing to pay it. So they sent this letter. Enclosed is the Fire Protection Agreement between Coal Spring and Nelsonville. Our Board of Trustees and our community have the highest regard for the Coal Spring Fire Company, both in performance of their core duty and also for the contributions they devote to promoting civic pride in Coal Spring and surrounding communities like ours. We also thank you for your June 6th letter following up on our FOIL request. Your effort to outline cost issues is appreciated. At this point, I'd like to just point out, we did respond immediately to their FOIL request, and we also added a lot more information, which they didn't request, trying to break it down so that I would think it would be, you know, make a lot more sense to anyone. I guess that effort didn't work. But your effort to outline cost issues is appreciated. In all candor, I must state that the agreement always be where, this one thing I've learned in working is when people start praising you at the beginning, you know there's a bang soon after. So, no disappointment from the mayor. In all candor, I must state that the agreement Coal Spring prepared and sent to us was unacceptable. Apart from the significant cost increases, several provisions were not acceptable. Paragraph 2.1, or 2i, there are areas in Nelsonville where hydrant access does not exist. The restriction on the provision of water is a serious issue for us. I'm not sure what he's referring to, or it's their village, so anyway, it's a little perplexing.
But in our agreement, they say that the fire company will use their hydrants to fight fires, and what they're saying is there are some areas in the village of Nelsonville where there aren't hydrants, so they can't do that.
Yes, and the perplexing part to me is it's their village, and so are we going to now put fire hydrants in and what is this, I think we have problems with our water system in the village also, as far as pressure goes. Paragraph 4, the provisions that our payment be evaluated and adjusted each year in February with no cap specified. Agreement to this provision will be fiscally irresponsible. When he's speaking of no cap, basically, we can't, it has to be adjusted each year because we don't know what it is from workers' comp and LoSAP, and that's where the adjustments are made, or any increases are made. So if we don't have that information, you know, at hand, we can't, you know, easily give it to them on a long-term, you know, contract or agreement. Paragraph 7, the termination provisions were unduly broad and onerous. The agreement we have submitted enclosed follows the form of the executed agreement to Coal Spring Phillips Town and should therefore be accepted to the village of Coal Spring. Our agreement is for one year, namely July 1st through June 30th. At our regular board meeting on June 19th, the Board of Trustees expressed its intent to have a voter referendum in 2018 on the issue of LoSAP award program, as well as explicit support of workers' compensation program. I don't know if it's called a program or not, but it is my understanding that Coal Spring's held such a referendum several years ago. Thus, when this referendum is completed, we may be in a position to establish a longer-term agreement. We would be glad to discuss any aspect of our agreement with the village of Coal Spring for fire protection. Let me conclude by stating that there are many areas where our two villages can work together in a cooperative manner. There are obviously issues that are stressing our communities and working together to reach lasting solutions to the benefit to your citizens and ours. I'm not sure how we work together when it's so hard on something that's so simple in my mind, but again, I'm not gonna read their agreement, but it's several pages, all to their benefit in working directly with the fire company. So, following up on that, I just wanted to address a few issues. One, somehow, we, the way we've been, the way that the fire, the way that the payments are broken down and how the fire protection works is basically Coal Spring Fire Company is determining the yearly cost. This is out of our hands. These are numbers they come up with, it's broken down, and these payments are broken down into the village of Coal Spring, Phillips Town, and Nelsonville. If I'm wrong at any point, stop me. So this is something we don't control. The coal, the fire company does go during budget season, goes to Phillips Town, which I don't know how that started, but is basically not lawful. We've found out because of this whole process. So, the village, they are basically a department of the village, and because of that, all dealings should be going directly through the village. So, you know, I've talked to Richard just briefly, just in talking, that we will have to change that. It's not gonna mean anything. It means we'll be at the table, or we'll bring the numbers to you instead of the fire company. So that is kind of one of their bones of contention, too, that we do it this way with Phillips Town, but we don't do this with Nelsonville. Nelsonville, we send, we send their bills. So we will align that, so everything is done the same way. So that's the first part, and that's most of the cost, is what, and it's determined by the Coal Spring Fire Company, how they break it down, or how they come up with the numbers, you would have to ask them, or you can follow for them, I'm not sure. Next is the LoSAP, the Service Award, and this is determined also by the Coal Spring Fire Company. It's basically an on-the-honor system where members log their hours towards eventual payment. Again, we don't have control of this, this is submitted to us, and we agree to pay or not. And, you know, we have agreed, and we've agreed to, you know, pay the LoSAP, so yearly, they give us those numbers, and they're included in the total cost. Workers' comp, again, it's insurance, it's not a program to say, and the insurance provider, like all insurances, are the ones that come up with the numbers for this. We don't have control over that, and that was one of our problems, not this year, the year before, when they had a big hike, but it came late in the year, it was either them or LoSAP, and we didn't get the, we didn't get those numbers to the village in time, the village in Nelsonville in time. So those two areas are basically out of control, in fact, all of these are. What we send and what we request from Nelsonville and from Phillips Town are payments, you know, are these three payments. And I can let, Marie can, you can jump in on how, there's a percentage that we, that we charge each one, which we think is a fair way. It's very hard to charge per house, or acre, or whatever, so, you know, we do have a formula, what we think's fair, which Nelsonville pays the least on, and if you want to elaborate on that, please do.
So, we've adopted a methodology which is based upon taxable assessed valuation of the properties that are within the Phillips Town Fire District number one, and the Nelsonville Fire District, as well as the Coal Spring Fire District. So we have a total taxable assessed valuation for those three municipal areas. And we then identify the percentage that is in the village of Nelsonville, the percentage that is in the Phillips Town Fire District number one, and the percentage that is in the village of Coal Spring. And then we use, using that percentage, we allocate the LoSAP costs, and the workman's comp cost, and the LoSAP administrative cost. These are not village of Coal Spring administrative costs. LoSAP charges X number of thousands of dollars a year, and then they charge a fee for administering essentially the pension plan. So using the LoSAP costs, the pension plan costs, and the workers' comp costs, that is driven by the percentage of taxable assessed valuation. It's fairly straightforward. We get the taxable assessed valuation from Putnam County, and that is generated by the fire district number that is in your tax bill.
So, that's how those work, and so what basically we're doing is we are, we are coming up with what we think's, you know, a fair distribution of the cost for the fire company. And that's, and those are the three pieces of that. What we don't charge anyone else for is for the heat, water, fuel for vehicles, and the maintenance of the fire company. Any main projects, like the roofs that are coming up, capital improvements, that's bored solely by the residents of the village. We don't pass that on to anyone. So what we're doing is we're, we're just passing along the cost for fire protection in a way that we think is fair. And for whatever reason, we're not making money on it, and I know those are remarked that we're, we think that they're cash cow, it was made by a former mayor, but, you know, that's just not, not the case, and it's easily identified, it's easy to identify all the costs and how we've broken it down, and if anyone would like to look at that, I mean, it's available. And we, you know, I think we could send a letter, or have that, Jeff, we have that letter available, and we sent them with the total breakdown, maybe make it clear. Anyway, so at this point, I'm not sure, this is unacceptable to us, we're not taking, we are not accepting a partial payment. We won't be accepting any payment that we receive from them, so they are without fire protection, you know, starting July 1st. This is, you know, after conversation with our attorney, and he'll be drafting a letter or, you know, telling us which direction we can move in here. They can, if they, you know, we, they can get fire protection from
North Highlands.
North Highlands, or Nelsonville, or wherever they'd like to shop around. I'm not sure how, you know.
There's a fire on July 1st in Nelsonville.
I think we, the fire, we'd have to, we'd have to
Fire company will respond.
They'll respond, but obviously, we have to, yeah, we're not letting, but it's a good question.
Well, you said it.
It would prove a point, you know. A few people die, maybe a dog, I don't know. No, we'll definitely cover, but something has to be done, and we can't bear the cost of everything, and we think what we were doing and have been doing for
Well, our rates have gone up also, which is the reason for the increase anyway.
Right.
I didn't hear you mention that, I mean, that
The rates on
For ourselves, for LoSAP, and for our company. That is the reason for their increase.
Yeah, we didn't just increase them and say we're gonna add $5,000 more dollars, adding where it's from. So I just wanted to clear that up, or well, maybe I won't clear it up, hopefully I didn't buy it even more, if anything else, anyone like to say on that? I think that's kind of in a nutshell, and hopefully
I don't think, I don't have it on board, the last three years Coal Spring's budget, the firehouse has been, I think, almost exactly the same.
The cost.
The fire, the fire company's budget for the municipalities hasn't changed in three years.
Yeah, it's been the same.
Right.
Has been the same, yeah.
So the only increases have been workers' comp and LoSAP.
Yeah, and the LoSAP, I know, North Highlands, it's legit, I mean, someone keeps track of every time you're at the firehouse, you sign in, and then at the end of the month, they total it up, and someone validates that, yeah, you were here, you know, so
And by the way, the percentage of allocation, 60% is paid by the village of Coal Spring, and we ask approximately 21% to be paid by the village of Nelsonville, and I think it's 18% to be paid by the town. So it's not as if we're asking 50%, it's 60, or 20-something now.
Well, Dave said that, you know, we don't have any control over the LoSAP.
No, you're right.
We really don't, but it's not because, you know, the firm will put the numbers in, it's because the company who covers this
Right.
Award is sitting there, and it has gone up in the range of about $10,000 a year. There was a review this year, recently, with the gentleman, the fire company who does, you know, all this reporting, to go again over all of the people he is reporting, to make sure that whoever's being reported are people who actually will eventually get to the point where they'll collect this, not people who moved out of town, not people who will come back. So there was a little bit of cleanup on the list recently to help with the numbers. But, I mean, this number just gets fed to us, every year gets fed to us, early in the year, you know, and when we get it, we look at it and say, oh my God, is that for real? And they say, yes, it is, that's the number, you know. So it doesn't jump significantly.
Okay, it sounds like it's from the service, the LoSAP, on the other end, it's not, the municipalities aren't making it higher, the firehouse isn't gonna make it higher, and the service isn't, so maybe
It's the insurance company.
Maybe there's a way around that somehow, we will all get together and try to fight it, as well take one, like Coal Spring, Nelsonville law, and Coal Spring Garrison, North Highlands, maybe there's something to do with that, I don't know. I never really got that law, when it comes to that, but I really don't know how it works. But they're increasing that every It's a private, for-profit company that runs that program. I mean, it's not like a state fund or something like that, they're a corporation, so they make enough Yeah, but they're making fees that much every single year. That's not fair. I don't think it's fair to do that to a municipality, you know, that doesn't seem right to me.
Okay, new business. Authorized Village Clerk to sign a letter of intent to join New York State Municipal Workers' Compensation Alliance, switch from PERMA. Jeff went over it, but were you talking with him, or?
Yes.
Someone like to go over that? I think it's fairly simple.
It is fairly simple. Karen from our insurance company, Spain, came in and met with Steve and Jeff and myself, and they do this every year, this is a workers' comp policy, and they will go out for us and get at least two bids. The company that we're currently dealing with, PERMA, and we've had for a couple of years, came in this year about $200 more than they had last year, so last year our premium was $67,418. This year, the premium for workers' comp, and this is basically for the village employees, for the highway, the water, and police.
Police, yeah.
Police. Not, this is not fire.
No, they have their own.
So this year, they quoted $67,681. In addition, Karen in Spain, we now got us a second quote from a company called New York State Comp Compensation Alliance, which is a very reputable company, and they came in at $62,300, so it's a savings of about $5,500.
We used to have them for years.
Yeah, we had them, and we sort of flipped back and forth. New York State Municipal Comp Alliance is more connected with NICOM, I believe, in that organization, where PERMA is more connected with the state, state agencies. But they're both reputable, Karen assured us that it would not make a difference, we would not lose anything by switching companies. And probably we'll see in a couple of years that PERMA wants us back, so they'll undercut, you know, so this will go back and forth, it makes really no difference in terms of, in terms of our coverage for employees, but it's a savings to us, and so we recommend that we take the new company, New York State Comp Alliance, with savings of $5,300 for the year. And what happens is Jeff will have to sign, the village clerk will sign a letter of our intent, and then there'll be a resolution in the next meeting, which we have to do because we're changing companies.
All right, so I'll make a motion to authorize village clerk to sign a letter of intent.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is a quick discussion on our cleaning service for Village Hall. Being here frequently, as many of us are, we're not exactly happy about the cleaning company that we have right now. So we went out and we contacted a couple other people. Currently, we're paying $475 a month, that's twice a week, and I think it's like about 45 minutes, if that, anyway. The other is from Liable, which is $575 a month, that's twice a week, and the third is Merrymades, which is, to start off, they said it would be two people for $100, and they would do once a week, so they are supplying two people, it won't be twice a week. There's a few things, well, one thing we might have to do is put the garbage out, or, you know, whatever's in containers out, if we go with that. So those are three services that we got prices from. I'd like to recommend Merrymades and see if we can, and work with them and see what one week looks like, you know, they'll do it for a month, and we have to give, I think we have to give 30 days notice, I'm not sure, because the contract ran out with the current company, but there is a provision in there for, since we kept moving ahead with them for 30 days, so.
So it's, it's $100 every seven days?
It's $400 a week, yeah.
I'm sorry?
It's $400 a month, sorry.
Well, it's, it's $400, some months will be $500 some other months because, okay. But we, do we need two people?
Well, that's what he's recommending, so you can see what it, see what it entails, and I think they're actually gonna clean.
Do they, do they, does it go down to one person if they find
I can't, we can, they're gonna assess once, after the month.
And this is
I mean, this is for a month, then we can
And this is for the first floor and the second floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, everything is being done now.
Okay.
Or not.
Or not being done.
Exactly.
They'll take their, they bring the supplies in and bring your equipment
Yes, they bring their own equipment, and they take it away, so
So they're $100 a week, is that what you said?
For two, two people, whatever it takes.
Roughly the same price, but we'll get better at it.
I think so. Only it's gonna be in one day instead of two, or maybe that won't work, maybe you need it twice. We'd schedule for Thursday, so it'll be after court, of course, it's being held on a Wednesday, so if there's extra traffic or whatever, winter, we have that clean the next day. I'd like to make a motion to move ahead with Merrymades for a trial period of one month.
I'll second that.
Who starts the second?
I'll give it to Frank.
I'll give it to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, three is Consider Resolution 22-2, 2017, authorizing budget adjustments. Didn't go over all of these, but as we do monthly, if we need to, we have to pull monies from one line to the other. Any questions on these, or?
I think that the
The numbers, right?
Yes, as I was already
I think that the rationale for the second, yeah, second grouping here is incorrect. The, we had actually allocated money in the 2016, 2017 budget for, to train the village clerk. I believe that the reason it needs to be reallocated is because of Mary's retirement income and year-end income. So I would like to see that restated. I'll talk to Michelle about that tomorrow. I talked to her about it today, and we agree that the money is insufficient, it's in the budget, and we agree that that's where it should come from. It's just the statement that
Okay. For the record. Okay. Any others?
No, I did review them, I went through them today, so I have no problems.
So, I'll make a motion to authorize these budget adjustments with the restatement of the second grouping to reallocate personal services for training of new village clerk, which Marie will follow up with Michelle on.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
To roll call.
Oh, to roll call, sorry. Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Valoto?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
On the financial highlights, I have the same consideration I like made in the second item. It was, it was not for the training, it was for salary, Mary's, your end salary, retirement salary, and I'll talk to Michelle about that.
Okay. Financial So financial highlights, I guess, the accompanying financial statements are preliminary and will not be finalized until the FRP group performs the annual audit for the period ending May 31st, 2017. They have sent an initial engagement letter, but if not yet, schedule the time to come to the village office. I've reached out to John Costello for scheduling. Also included with the May 31st financial statements is a report outlining permit revenue for the year. As I was reconciling the accounts, I broke out each category to see the true sources of revenue within A002590-000, which is generically called permits and waivers. HDRB has their own account, and it may be helpful to create new accounts starting fiscal year 2017-18 for ZBA planning and docking. First, the highlights, attorney, contractual invoices are only paid through March. I have emailed CMMR for April and May I have emailed CMMR for April and May invoices, we haven't received those yet. Village clerk personal services, this is one Marie was just referring to again, it says, although I believe that money was budgeted, anticipation of Mary's retirement, more was needed to cover the training of the new village clerk. To Marie's point, it wasn't for training. Next is Highway Department overall, salaries were much higher than anticipated, attributable mostly to payouts for retired Ed Trimble, the highway chief, unused vacation payouts, and time spent on snowplow removal. State of police retirement, the balance in these two accounts is not a true saving. The state has not yet issued the estimated invoice for pension system, for the pension system for next year. Once it is issued, I will accrue most, if not all, of the amounts remaining. Social Security and Medicare, since overall salaries were higher than anticipated, subsequently FICA taxes were higher than anticipated. Remaining fiscal year vouchers, the majority of the sixteen-seventeen vouchers will be paid June twenty-seventh. Currently, I have an estimated seventy-five hundred for the general fund, which includes one thousand for TAV, eighteen hundred ninety for Medicare reimbursement, six hundred thirty-four for Bobcat brush utilities, unemployment, public notices, and other miscellaneous items. Water sewer funds, financial statements for water and sewer are not ready. I've been focusing my time on the general fund. I'll distribute when I have a better preliminary report for water and sewers. Anyone?
Of course.
Okay.
So. Michelle.
Okay.
Michelle. I don't see in here where we have a shortfall for LoSa and workers' comp because of the lack of menson bill payment. Because they didn't pay in the two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget cycle either. And I think it should be somewhere in here, I just can't find.
Was that budgeted for, and then they didn't pay it, or I don't think it was budgeted for?
I think we budgeted for it in two thousand sixteen-seventeen budgets, and they just never paid. So I'd like to go back to Michelle and confirm that. The, where we have shortfalls in two thousand sixteen-seventeen here, I want to make sure that we are correctly, let me call it, bulked up for year-end payments for two thousand seventeen-eighteen. Because of the change in our compensation package, people have to cash out in two thousand, in, by May thirty of two thousand eighteen, they have to cash out unused vacation and sick and personal days. And I want to make sure that that money is in the two thousand seventeen-eighteen budget, as well as FICA, to cover that in two thousand seventeen-eighteen. So I'll follow up with Michelle on that tomorrow. The one thing that, so if I look at Michelle's analysis, bottom line, it says that we had a shortfall of approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We had budgeted, last page, bottom of the page, oh, sorry, top of the page, last page, top of the page. Total expenditures, two point eight million, budgeted, sorry, I'm wrong. Two point eight million budgeted, two point two million expended, so we had, we didn't have a shortfall. We had a, we realized six hundred thousand dollars, sorry, five hundred, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars as, as, we didn't need to spend it, which is great.
But this is not complete, I mean, this is not the end of sixteen-seventeen, she's got attorney bills.
This is, this is the last one here.
No, she has attorney bills that I've not committed yet, but she just.
But she's gonna accrue them, she's gonna have to accrue them, she said this is, I spoke to her today, what we have here is the last batch.
There needs to be more adjustments.
There's definitely more, there's definitely.
But there's not a quarter, a half a million dollars worth of adjustments. The expenses show we under-expended by a half a million dollars. The income says that we, we had projected income of two point eight million. We achieved two point three million. So we are, we are slightly over in terms of what we brought in than what we expended. That's how I read that.
I mean, according to this, we really only have additional left over at the end of the year, eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand eight oh six. I mean, the difference between our budget and what the actuals are is not, I think, what we're looking at. What we're looking at is what we actually brought in, and she did say the revenue was less than expected. And part of it is that I believe the whole of the Main Street project was still being shown as revenue. She was trying to explain this to me tonight.
She's gonna, she's gonna move that, that's, I believe that that's in the seventeen-eighteen budget, the Main Street project.
But the Main Street project in the sixteen-seventeen budget, we had budgeted in the budget, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, and actual, this is, and revenue. Actual was two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty-one thousand is not totally what we should have had.
But I believe that in the seventeen-eighteen budget, that whatever wasn't expended, I believe that you will see a line in seventeen-eighteen budget for the Main Street project.
But you're, I mean, we're not expecting the account of revenue, the amount of revenue, because the project is pretty much paid out. So that the income from the project is no longer, should not have been, in sixteen-seventeen, should not have been five hundred and fifty-one thousand.
She, I had that discussion with, with, with.
Okay, so why don't we do this, wasn't, I thought the agreement was that she was supposed to be here on the third, during the financial reports. Isn't that, isn't that?
I thought.
Is that right? Ellen was here, I think she's supposed to be here at the meeting during the financial reports. And then she could explain all of this, instead of everyone guessing at where we're at. But, you know, and I think we still need that, I mean, you're bringing up points, it's like.
That makes sense.
So we have to, definitely, yeah, she has to, she has to make an appearance, which is asking, please do. I know that was part of the agreement. We can move everything to the beginning of the meeting, she can get out of here.
Start early.
Now, that causes trouble. So approval of bills?
I make a motion, we have two batches here. I make a motion to approve batch number forty-one thirty-four for the previous fiscal year, for forty-one thousand dollars, six, forty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I make another motion to approve batch number forty-one thirty-five for twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and six cents for two thousand seventeen eighteen.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of minutes, make a motion to approve the workshop meeting of June sixth, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, I was not gonna.
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly meeting of June thirteenth, Village, bringing Village Board of Trustees.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
In the, in the minutes, and I sent this to Jeff last week, in the minutes, last nine, page one.
Of which, of page?
Of page one.
Oh, okay.
It says Tree Advisory Board, when you go to the second page, it says, the Tree Advisory Board voted in favor of recommending the removal of forty-six yew trees on village property adjacent to two thirty Main Street. They did not, they voted in favor on the contingency that the property owner came up with an acceptable replacement plan, which has not occurred. So that sentence would imply that there is approval to go ahead and take down the forty-six yew trees, and that is not the case. So that has got to be corrected.
Okay, so I think it should be changed to discussion on the removal of forty-six yew trees.
Yeah, I sent, I sent up the new wording, I'll look at them tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
And then secondly, if you go to middle of the page, it says, report of the Highway Department. And if you look at that, that's a fairly lengthy and detailed list of what the Highway Department is saying in their monthly report. And this is followed by Mayor Miranda requested that subsequent monthly reports from the Highway Department be more detailed. I don't think that's what you asked for, I think what you asked for was a list of, for example, where the, where the new signs were put up. If you look at the fifth bullet, put up new signs, you asked, can you give me the detail behind the new signs? Where are they, and what kinds of signs are they, so?
I was asking for more details in general, where they said they were, where they were putting mulch down, like, well, how many tree beds did you? Which I don't even see here, I'm looking through quickly.
Okay, so you're looking for elaboration.
Exactly.
Name is spelled tire.
Yeah.
I had sent him that too, yeah.
Tires.
They were tires. Hey, I know how that is.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Do you have a second on that?
Yes, you do.
So, anything else, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As amended, as amended.
So I'll go over it quickly, just like kind of the logistics of the fireworks and get your input. So with the, with the fireworks being shot off of a pontoon, that opens up the whole park, so the whole park's now available. So which is before, because it needed that two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred and fifty buffer, the whole, the whole east corner was totally, you know, totally, you couldn't use it. So we used to set up the trailer in front of the trees, kind of facing the dock, the bandstand. So this year, I went over with Bruce and with Damian McDonald, who's doing, generously doing the lighting and sound for us, which is really a huge bonus, and forgot to mention him earlier. So we're gonna be setting up the trailer in the tree area, if you're familiar with the films and where they set up the films and the screen, it'll be in the shade in that area, kind of facing diagonally towards, more towards the, towards Mayor's Park. And so that'll be where that's set up, and people can, you know, hang out under the, you know, in the shade or whatever in that area. Most of the rest of the parks are gonna be in the dead sun for most of the, for most of the day, or, well, not really, a few hours. And then as the sun sets, obviously, it'll be better. So the, so the ideas are, well, what we've been discussing is where to actually place the vendors. Like, because some people were complaining that, or thought it would be better to have beer and food and stuff where the action is, kind of where the bands are. So we start off the event with Ted Brooks Molly, young man over there, playing, better be good, and.
I drove the other night, it was very good.
So they'll be kicking it off once again, how many years have you done that?
Uh, me? My parents have been doing it for like forty years, I just started playing with them like four years ago.
So they'll be starting it off at the bandstand, and we'll have the contest there, but then it goes to the other bands of playing at Dockside. So it's like, but if we have, with food, concessions, or whatever over on Dockside, then that just kind of empties the park. I mean, empties the bandstand and the dock area, so it's like, how do you, how do you use best all of our properties?
Also, the, putting the vending trucks on West Street, they're in the shade. You've got all the parked trees on the west side of West Street. And if you move them to Dockside, they'll probably be in the sun.
Having, having vended for a number of years at the Fourth of July events, I've got some comparative figures. When we were set up around the dock and the bandstand, the vendors did very well. When we were over, kind of along the hillside of Dockside, you know, like, as you go, you know, as you drive in, and then there's that hillside that goes on the right.
Yeah.
When we were set up there, nobody did very well at all, and so we lost a lot of vendors after that. So I know we didn't, we didn't sell anything when we were set up there.
Do you know more?
You know, I think because most of the activity is, is right around the bandstand, like, people come and visit the dock and, you know, everything kind of mills around, around there, and then if they want to go and hang out and stuff and stuff.
But is, is the, the whole music is gonna be on, in Dockside, on the flatbed?
Wouldn't you think that they, the thinking was that the crowds would, would start off at the bandstand and then migrate northward to Dockside? Yeah, you know.
And the bouncy houses, the bouncy toys aren't gonna be, they're gone.
Right, right, yeah, you know, we didn't have bouncy houses when we were vending over on Dockside too. I don't know why that is, it stands to reason to me that near the music, the vending would be better. But, you know, it's, it's just kind of the interpretation of the environment of where it is. I mean, it's kind of nice to keep Dockside just for kids to run around and, you know, keep all the commercial aspect of it near the dock and where other businesses are already.
Do the, like, in the evening, sort of closer to when the fireworks are running, do the beer vendors do better? Because I would think people are gonna grab a beer as they go and stand and watch the fireworks, like, later in the evening. Maybe not necessarily, you know, sausage and peppers, or maybe beer, so they may be better.
I think people who want beer are gonna go no matter where, you know, they're gonna go where the beer is, you know.
Where did we decide on the, the Florida towns, are they all gonna be on Dockside, or where do you get the place?
I, I reached out to Bruce, let me hear.
Last year, I think, and past year, they had a cross from Moomoo's, I think. And so if they aren't there, we move them more onto Dockside, we could put the beer closer to that end, still be in the shade and be kind of midpoint or a lot closer.
Since there's no bouncy house, you could put them closer to the shade, close to the river.
There's no, there's no trees there.
There's some brush and stuff like that that would be better than putting them on the.
They give you shade?
East side of the.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of the, of the beer truck, though.
Well, I'm thinking of the toilets, so they're not sitting right in. Right, poison something.
There's no shade.
There's a little along the, right around the water there, if you, when you first walk into the easement, on the left, there's a row of trees and bushes and stuff. If you put it closer to that, would be better than the east side of the easement.
I, I thought that was all open.
I mean, there's, there's not a forest there, but there is, there is some shade there, there isn't any on the other side.
As you get closer in, where you've got the standard trees in the middle there. Where's, where are the Film Society board parties?
They're at the very corner, end of the party, towards the east side, east corner.
Yeah, the consideration, another consideration for putting vendors kind of on West Street, near the bandstand, is that most of the vending stops once people gather for the fireworks. That way, the vendors can just kind of get out of there and get out of everybody's way while the fireworks are happening, and then, you know, and, you know, they're not bumping into people, you know.
A lot of us, one vendor wanted to leave before, and if we were on Dockside, I was saying, it's not gonna be easy.
Do you have not be times for the bands?
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have time, I don't have long in here, but yeah, I mean, they started.
First one starts at, at four thirty till?
Four thirty.
Four thirty to.
Till five thirty, and then a fifteen minute break, and then every hour.
Fifteen minute break, so that people can move to Dockside, and then five forty-five to six forty-five, fifteen minute break, seven o'clock to seven forty-five, fifteen minute break, eight o'clock to eight forty-five, fifteen minute break, fireworks.
Or hold on.
Or something like that.
I think the final band will be, they'll set it so that they play till the, till the fireworks go up. They've also agreed to do Smar Spanglepand, they're excited about it, they have a good horn section, so. So, it sounds like we should set vendors up on, on West Street, and I think we should try, well, we'll have to work out where the, where the Portage Johns go, and I think move the beer instead of, it's usually on the corner right next to the bandstand, try to get that horn.
It's normally down.
It's usually right.
It's usually right next to the bandstand, usually, yeah, usually the first one.
Isn't there usually two beer, I mean, you've got the, what was it, the Lions Club that's next to the bandstand, isn't there another one in the park at the, it's not the Metro Call Office, but I thought there was.
I think in the past, there was one, a small, I think Halley might have been.
Yeah, Halley, I remember the beer, then, one year we did, it was the beer, then it was us, and it was Halley and the water, they do, are they Halley doing again this year?
Yeah, Halley and the Lions Club.
That's it.
And Cappuccinos, I think, and Lynn, and.
Angelina's.
Angelina's has a food truck, and we haven't heard from Greg.
Oh, really?
We'll follow up.
I was at this morning.
Okay, so that's good. That was easy. We did our meetings, you guys should come to our meeting. Anything from our faithful audience that you?
I got some quick real quick. I have the quote for the siren, for everybody to keep a copy of, should we need to replace it? That's what Metro is filling, and that does not include a lift to install it with.
Jesus Christ.
Yeah, that's what I said.
And this is, the situation is, everything works except for the actual siren.
Right, if it didn't, there would be a lot more money.
How old is that siren?
The siren, it looks old, but who knows?
I think it's really old.
It looks like from the forties or something, it's, it's pretty dampened up, it's old, it's been painted a few times around.
So, this is not the total bill? This, the.
Doesn't include a lift either.
I say onsite, the village is responsible for providing a truck to remove the old siren and install a new siren. We don't, the village doesn't have a truck.
No, I have to rent a lift, or if we can't go up.
System provided, they say, to use your own truck.
Maybe you could jam it out?
Do you guys have one or?
So, before we go there, we, I did contact Andrew, he's going to look at it this week and see if there's something simple that can be replaced, or tell, assess it and see if we have to replace it or not, so hopefully, it sounds like all the lines, all the lines are.
Yeah, everything, they can't check it for, they're filling us for an hour or two, but everything works, and then from the, from the all the electronic devices up to the siren, there's something going on there, so it's either at the siren or in the wiring or whatever.
Is this the company that we just paid a bill to?
No.
No.
Okay, so we don't have a service contract with that?
No, we don't.
So, they're going to bill us for a couple of hours of.
Right, I have, I saw the bill, I can watch this, yeah, so, they got it up quickly.
I still think it's, it's important to understand the trade-off of this versus the other communicated, communication methods that they use, whether it be texting, or cell phones, or CB radios, or whatnot. The argument is that if this, if the network goes down, they don't get the call. Well, if the electricity is down, you don't get the siren, and if you don't live in the village, you don't get the siren. So, what's, what's, what's best practices for reaching out to firefighters to get them to respond to the call?
Well, they're using every modern method that, that they have, and the siren is like a failsafe, I think that's the way they look at it. But I'm going to go to their meeting Thursday, and I'm going to ask them, do you have to by law or something have this siren, or is this just a redundancy that is required by some rule of New York State or something?
It would seem to me that we, we lose power more than we lose the cellular network. Just to.
Yeah, it's not on a generator, the sirens just.
No.
Well, is it a matter of losing it or having service somewhere if you have people that are, and again, I don't, I don't know.
You need to have electricity going to the siren for the siren to sound.
I guess, I guess the situation is, if you don't have your phone in your pocket, like if you're cutting grass or something and you live in the village, the only thing you're going to hear is that siren.
If you're not cutting the grass, and, and you don't have your cellphone in your pocket, and you don't have the, the communications radio.
Radio.
Yeah.
And if you're not standing in one of the dead zones where you can't really hear the siren anyway.
I guess, you know, it's like, somebody's going to have a phone in their pocket, somebody isn't, and these sirens, someone else is going to have, you know, it, it covers all alternatives.
Well, I mean, what's the, what's the population of the fire company members that don't live in the village?
What's that?
I mean, that, those are automatically eliminated, that the siren does them no good. So, so getting to them, getting them notified, the siren doesn't help. I, I accept that Nelsonville probably hears the siren, but as, as was pointed out, we don't hear the siren here, in the, in the office here.
No, well, you don't hear anything in the office here, seriously, very, I mean, I've had, I've seen many times and say, did you hear this, you know, Russian on the street, did you hear, you hear nothing inside this office.
Got your head down.
I know, I'm very busy, very dedicated.
Those are the bright stuff.
I can't, I can't hear it where I am.
I can hear it. Steve, on this quote, the last item, onsite remove old equipment and install new, five hundred dollars, and yet they're saying the village has to do that.
No, no.
The village has to provide the truck capable of removing the old siren and installing a new siren.
They mean, they mean a bucket that will reach that height.
And then their guys are going to win there?
They're going to use it, yeah, so we have to provide them a lift, they do not own them.
But they, but they take care of sirens.
Well, that's something they will do for us. Now, I'm sure, you know, if you go to sirens R Us or something, it might be cheaper, I don't know. But yeah, this is a, this, these lifts are, are not cheap either.
Yeah, but if you're a siren.
I was pricing one recently, and it was six hundred and something dollars a day.
If you're a siren company, don't you think you would have that?
That's not all they do, they're really a two-way radio communications company, and for some reason, they were in our rolodex for the people that maintain the siren at one point or another.
They're from Bedford Hills.
So, maybe we need to find somebody new.
We could, you know, you know, there's no reason that, that all, if he was interested, could also give us a quote for a new siren, anybody could do it, and he has a lift also, so, but this is just a company that, that has been used in the past.
I think they can find somebody else.
Okay, so we'll wait and see if Andrew.
But it's still going to be some big money, no matter who does it, if these guys are charging almost five grand for this thing, you're going to be upwards of, I would imagine, a lot more, but, I don't know.
I'll follow up with Andrew, we'll go to the meeting Thursday, we'll be at the meeting.
Air conditioning gets pushed back for another year.
Anything from?
A multi-part question. Can I ask?
My pension isn't that long.
Can I ask what the quote was for Metro?
Oh, yes.
What are they asking total?
Four thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars, no lift included.
Wow.
So, a lift is five hundred plus for a day at least to reach that.
And just on the, the budget adjustments, so there's no resolution to authorize those, right? You held that off of that, or did you have?
No, we did.
No, we, with the, with the adjustment of the one.
Okay.
Explanation.
One explanation.
And then on the Nelsonville proposal, the forty-one thousand five hundred that they're proposing, is that less than what you're asking, or is that?
Yes.
Okay, and that's based mainly on the LoSa and workers' comp?
Yeah. That's like what they paid last, two years ago.
They didn't pay, they didn't pay what was requested of them last year either.
Right, okay. And then final question, anything new on the roof and/or air conditioning, or is that?
No, I took, I took measures for the, just to see what the cubic fee was, but I haven't followed up on that yet.
And as far as the air conditioning, we told them last week that that's not in the budget.
Right.
Well, one thought is if they are, if they, you know, if there, there is a need for a new boiler or whatever, then look into, you know, combination unit.
Building unit, heat and air.
We'll see which, which way is the way to go.
But do we have a, building on your multi-part question, do we have a schedule for going to get a bid package for that roof?
I'm trying to get, I'm working with Steve on it, just hasn't materialized.
Are we thinking July?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, is there any chance of putting windows back in that, where the windows will take out in nineteen ninety-eight?
That's what Steve likes.
That's what I want to do, I think that as, as a village property, I assume they bricked them all up to save money, there's no really any reason to cover up windows because they didn't want to replace them, so I'd like to just look into.
At least half windows or something, and the whole ones would be wonderful.
Well, it would be good.
They were.
Be good all around, but.
They were glass blocks.
Right, that's what.
But then there were also the halos here, however you say.
Yeah, prank out.
Not on the, on the.
Not on all of it, on some of them.
It should be nice to put something like that on top of the glass block, it'd be nice, you know, you'd have, just what they said, they don't have, there's no light, there's no ventilation in there.
Well, that would, yeah, you have windows.
Twenty years ago, they, they blocked up all the windows.
Yep, I assume they realize the cost, and bricks are cheaper than new windows, so I guess they, they closed them off and put paneling in front of them.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.